At this time, I'd like to call the meeting of the Stanley County Board of Commissioners regular meeting on March 4th, 2013 at 7:00 PM to order. Like to welcome everyone here tonight. We appreciate your interest in county government. Hope you'll stay as long as you like and after your business you came to see is conducted, if you'd like to leave, feel free to do so. Also for those folks at home who might be watching, we welcome you. Also our media, Leon Warren must be sick because he's not here. But, welcome Brian, glad to have you.
Josh is sick.
And Josh Morton will be excused tonight. He is homesick with the flu. He got sick yesterday, so he will be excused tonight. At this time, I'll ask Commissioner Dennis for an indication.
Let us pray. Oh God, you have called your servants to ventures of which we cannot see the endings. By paths of yet untrodden, through perils unknown. Give us fates to go out with good courage, not knowing where we go, but only that your hand is leading us and your love is supporting us through your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. At this time, are there any adjustments to the agenda? Anyone have anything?
Yeah, just if we could add animal control to it. I think Commissioner Donovan, myself, we had a meeting last week and we just need to probably mention it and get direction from the other commissioners.
You want to do that during our comments or add an item?
We're going to do it either way.
Let's just do it during the comments section. Okay, thank you for that. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. I have a motion by Commissioner Dennis, second by Commissioner Shudo. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you. At this time, we'll start with our first scheduled agenda item. It is a proclamation celebrating the 100th anniversary of North Carolina Extension and Community Association, and the presenter will be Lori Ivy, our North Carolina Extension agent. Welcome Lori.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here. I want to take this opportunity to thank you for allowing us to highlight the work of North Carolina Extension and Community Association. For those of viewers out there, you may know this group as Extension Homemakers or Home Demonstration Clubs. 2013, we celebrate 100 years in North Carolina and in Stanley County, almost 100 years. We'll celebrate our Achievement Day on March the 16th, and it's the 90-something year. I'm not sure if it's 96, 97, but it's close to 100 years we've been celebrating here in Stanley County. At this time, I know there are a lot of members that are here tonight, and I would just ask if you're a member of Extension and Community Association, to please stand and/or as staff member. For those of you that have been to any event at the Aggressivics Center, you have seen many of these ladies at work, sometimes behind the scenes, but many times out in the front. So at this time, I believe we have a proclamation.
Commissioner Dennis, it's going to be the proclamation.
Whereas Extension and Community Association is organized in all of North Carolina's 100 counties in the North Carolina Cherokee Reservation, and whereas beginning 100 years ago, Jane S. McKimmon worked to improve the quality of rural life and helped this state prevail during the Great Depression and two world wars by the formation of community clubs of volunteers to support the work of home demonstration. And whereas from its modest beginnings, Extension and Community Association, formerly known as Home Demonstration Clubs and Extension Homemakers, has grown to a diverse, wide-ranging, statewide organization of adult volunteers supporting the professional extension staff from North Carolina's two land-grant universities, North Carolina Agriculture and Technical University in Greensboro and North Carolina State University in Raleigh. And whereas Stanley Extension and Community Association views the family in all its diverse forms as the foundation of a society. And whereas Stanley Extension and Community Association, through thousands of volunteer hours, serves to enhance the local community with educational activities and events that empower families to lead healthier lives and to become community leaders. And whereas North Carolina Extension and Community Association will formally celebrate its centennial anniversary on October 27, 2013, and throughout 2013. Now therefore, Stanley County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the year 2013 as the 100th anniversary of the North Carolina Extension and Community Association in Stanley County, and urges all citizens to become familiar with the services and programs offered by Stanley County Extension and Community Association, and to support and participate in programs to enrich our local community and society. And it's undersigned in testimony where of this fourth day of March 2013 by Stanley County Commissioners individually. And Gene, having worked out in the Aggressivics Center for several years and seeing these ladies hard at work and being very appreciative of everything that they do, I would like to make the motion that we accept this proclamation.
Have a motion, have a second. Second by Commissioner Dennis, all in favor say aye. I oppose, no. Ayes have it. Thank you. And I will applaud you too Lori, for the hard work you do, and of course your staff, because you can't do it by yourself, and neither could your staff and all these volunteers that just stood up. You're to be commended for the hard work you do to keep this going. So thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you. And I didn't recognize Courtney Rickenberg, our new Family Consumer Science Agent, who works closely with Extension and Community Association, is here tonight with us, and without these ladies, it would be difficult for Courtney and I to do our jobs. Right now, Courtney is implementing a third grade nutrition program at both Central Elementary and East Albemarle, and each week, Extension and Community Association volunteer helps her with food preparations and teaching in the lessons in all those classrooms to more than 200 students. Thank you again for allowing me to be here tonight and acknowledging our 100-year celebration.
Thank you again. Our second agenda item is a recognition of one of our employees. And I'd ask Malia Miller, she'll come down front, have a presentation.
Malia is our tax administrator, and she's worked really hard since she was certified. And so I have her certificate, which is all available, but I got it in the mail and we want to recognize her publicly. The North Carolina Corporate Revenue hereby certifies that Malia M. Miller has successfully completed the requirements of the North Carolina General Fashion for certification of county concessions. I forwarded this in the 28th of November, 2012, beginning tonight. So the graduation is left, and the board requires her to report.
Before our next presentation, I will take this opportunity to make an announcement that most of you probably, well just as soon I didn't make, but tax notices will go out Wednesday, I believe.
Friday.
Friday, I'm sorry, Friday. So you just met the lady that will let you know whether or not, but we do have a process. If you have a complaint that you can call, we encourage you to do that. And Malia will handle it with grace, I'm sure.
Mr. Chairman, I think also, they were up here not too many meetings ago, but I would just like to again, express my appreciation, and I think the full board would as well, that all the hard work you and your staff have done to get to this point. I know, as Commissioner McIntyre said, we're not all very excited about it sometimes, but this is a very important revaluation, maybe the most important in the history of our county. And I know that you and your staff have worked very hard, and we'll continue to work hard as maybe some folks will come back in and be speaking with you about that. So I just wanted to say thanks, and I know the rest of the board feels the same way.
Our next agenda item is planning zoning. The presenter will be Michael Sandy, Planning Director, and to talk about ZA 13-01.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. For you tonight is a rezoning request. 13-01, Mr. Gerald Whitley, requests rezoning from RA Residential Agricultural to M1 Light Industrial. Requested rezoning of a 13-acre parcel land, tax record 9685. The property is located at the corner of NC 2427 Highway and Teter Road. Purpose of this requested amendment is to allow the applicant to operate a construction business on the property. All the adjoining properties are zoned RA Residential Agricultural. There is a 1.6 acre track across the road, which is 2427, to the north of the zoned highway business. This property is served by public water, but not public sewer. Property is not listed or located in a regulated floodplain or in a water supply watershed. Traffic on this section of 2427 has been estimated by the NC DOT as 10,000 cars per day. The planning board sent a favorable recommendation to the Commissioners due to the fact that property is located within a growth area in accordance to the Stanley County Land Use Plan. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, anybody have a question or comment for Mr. Sandy? Seeing none, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I have one. I didn't see anywhere in the notes or in the minutes whether you had requested of Mr. Whitley or required of him to not have a driveway that comes out on the 2427, so I wanted to ask about that. Are we in a place where we are asking folks not to put driveways out on the 2427, or does he already have a driveway that comes out on Teter Road?
There was an old house site facing 2427, if you're familiar with the property. There's small buildings, was the back buildings of the house when the road was widened, the house was removed, but the other buildings facing it. And I think DOT has already had, has a driveway cut there remaining.
So there is one?
Yeah, they'll drive.
Okay, but you know why I'm asking that.
Right, but we don't have any rules or regulations in place to prohibit, that's totally left up to the NC DOT.
So this business will continue to use a driveway that comes out? Is there access out onto Teter Road that could be possibly used in the future?
Yes, currently he uses Teter Road for a lot of his interest next.
And of course, the main reason for the question is that we have had discussions about 2427 and about limiting the amounts of use that comes out on the highway so that it remains a flow-through. And I know, Mr. Dennis, whenever you were with DOT, they did a lot of work trying to make sure that they kept this as a super street even, to try to make sure that we had as few folks getting out on driveways and also turning left. So that was the basis of my question.
Very good question. Anyone else? Hearing none, I now declare the public hearing open, and would ask anyone who wants to speak in favor of this rezoning, and I think Mr. Whitley is here. Would you like to please come forward and say a few words?
How you doing?
Please state your name and where you're from, please sir.
Gerald Whitley, 22275 Teter Road. My only statement is, I've had my equipment out there for 17 years, and I'm just trying to get it zoned for what it's being used for. That's it.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything for this open? Seeing none, I declare it a public hearing closed, and would ask the board, what's your pleasure?
I would approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Dennis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shudo. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. And the ayes have it. Thank you. All right, we will excuse Commissioner Dennis from item B. Another rezoning request, ZA 13-02. Michael Sandy is our presenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Request today is from WTD Development Incorporated on behalf of Dennis Holbrook and MDS Smith. They request rezoning from M2 Heavy Industrial to R8 Residential. Applicant requests to rezon the 5-acre portion of this property. Tax record number 6276. The property is located off Henson Street here at Albemarle. Purpose of this request is to use the property for multifamily residential dwellings. Property surrounded by zones such as M2 Heavy Industrial, R8 Multifamily, R10, and GHBD, which is General Highway Business District. Public utilities are provided by the city of Albemarle. Schools are served in this district are East Albemarle Elementary School and Albemarle High School. This property is not located in a regulated floodplain or in a water supply watershed. Traffic on this section of Henson Street has not been studied by NC DOT, but approximately 50 cars per day. The planning board forwarded this request to the county Commissioners with a favorable recommendation due to the fact that property is located in a growth area in accordance with the Stanley County Land Use Plan. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Anyone have a question for Mr. Sandy? Seeing none, I will now declare the public hearing open, and I think I have Mr. Dennis Tharrington, is that correct? Who would like to speak in favor of this. Come forward, please. Give us your name and where you're from, please.
I'm Dennis as well. My name is Dennis Tharrington, I'm from Henderson, North Carolina. If you go back one generation or two, my family is from this area, I believe. Nice to see you up there. But I'm just here just to answer any questions that y'all might have. Is it permissible that I tell you what I intend to do with this?
Yes, please do.
I intend to build apartments for elderly. We've done this in any number of places across the state, and it's been very well received everywhere we've ever put one. We have all kinds of activities for elderly people that live in the thing, and this is a preliminary that I brought with me, but if anybody wants to see this, I'll be glad to give it to them.
Would you approach, and we can look at that as we're doing this? Just start right down here, it'll be fine.
If you look in there, it has elevations of the building, and there's also some sample layouts of the apartments. All the apartments would have either one or two bedrooms, they would all have their own kitchen, a full kitchen, and of course bathroom, and living room, and storage areas. And throughout the building, there would be common areas. There would be one pretty good-sized common room that people could have birthday parties and things of that sort in. And then there'd be a room where people could go and have a physical examination if they needed one, maybe a beauty parlor, barber shop area, a library, an exercise area, what else did I leave out? Television room. Things of that sort would be a part of the, you know, in the structure inside. It would be a secure structure so that, you know, you'd need a passcode to get into the building, and we will have it staffed during the day, we won't staff it at night. Of course, everything in the building would, it'll be sprinkled and with fire alarm protection and all that sort of stuff. So it's always been well-received everywhere we've put one.
I've seen this type of situation before. Scotland County has a large one down there, and it's very nice facilities, and it serves a good purpose. They don't have to go anywhere for most of the things.
I think so.
Anyone have a question, Mr.?
One of the things that has interested me, when seniors, and I'm getting close, when seniors talk about...
I'm probably closer than you are.
We talk about being able to keep seniors in their homes or keep them there, and one of the things about being able to keep seniors in places where they live is access. Now obviously, you're located out there kind of behind Walmart area, but will there be a way for them to go from where they live into just all these areas where the shopping and food and all the other services are there? Will there be an opportunity for them to walk or ride a bike or do whatever to get in?
If they can ride a bike, yeah. But yes, yes, we'll have a way, that we'll have some transportation for them so they can go to those various places. Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, at this time I declare the public hearing closed, and would ask the board, what's your pleasure?
I make a motion, would you approve?
Have a motion by Commissioner Shudo to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Donovan. Any opposed? All in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Ayes have it. Thank you very much. And the next agenda item is also with Mr. Michael Sandy for about a planning board appointment. Welcome, Michael, again.
Can we talk about the county line first? All the board appointments are next, okay, I'm sorry. Sorry, I didn't have the agenda in front of me. Yeah, we have two vacancies on the Board of Planning Board that we'd like to have replacements for at your convenience. We had two members who did not want to serve another term.
Okay, thank you. And I will entertain a motion on the planning board appointments.
Mr. Chair, I move that we appoint Joseph Burleson and Terry Smith to serve these terms for the planning board.
I have a motion by Commissioner Donovan, second by Commissioner Dennis. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. And the ayes have it. Thank you. And I think you've got one more item.
Yes, sir.
I want to talk about drawing a line in the river. My wife want to know how we're going to do that.
Very careful.
I said special paint.
That's right. Yeah, this is going to give you a quick update on the establishment or re-establishment identification of the county line between Stanley County and Cabarrus, which is immediately 2 hour west. Little bit of history, the line was established in 1762. Of course, that was a division line between Anson County and the newly-formed Mecklenburg County, in which of course Cabarrus was created out of. Montgomery County and thus later Stanley in 1842 were created, used in the same line. Got some maps down here, if you want to look them after the meeting, I'd be glad to go over those in a little more detail, but just kind of give you an update, speed, how we've got to where we are now. County project timeline, we started in summer 2009. We were approached by Cabarrus County to express interest in identifying the county line in a more accurate manner. Cabarrus had already been working and had worked through their line establishment with Mecklenburg County and Union County. They wanted to tackle Stanley next, and then they're going to Rowan. So as of the winter of 2010, Dennis Lee with the North Carolina Geodetic Survey started research on the history of this section of county line in accordance with the NC General Statute 153A-18. In the fall of 2011, we met with Cabarrus County to find the, to review the findings from Dennis Lee and a possible timeline of what we have to do and what our options are to identify the line and have it established. And as of winter 2013, the North Carolina Geodetic Survey has reestablished the line and places the monuments they're out there surveying now, establishing the line they have found evidence for, from Rowan County down to the Union County line. We do have one interesting fact, this Rocky River question. In doing this research, we found out that the county line is a straight line. If you're familiar with the Polk 4 Road area of Stanley County, the county line is established, as I stated, in 1762 and re-identified in 1803. Went from this point that you see on the southern part of the map, in the middle of Rocky River, in confluence of a side river, all the way up to Rowan County. It was a straight line. Sometime in the 30s, we're not exactly sure, there's no history of it in Raleigh, but maps were beginning to change and identifies the river as the county line. And ever since then, that's been, you know, what everybody's understood as being the county line was the river. But by the research, it is not. It's still a straight line. So what we have here is, you see some parcels, you see some parcels that where the river falls, this line versus the straight line, you'll have some parcels that are technically in Cabarrus County now, and some of those are technically in Stanley County. Just to give you an idea of the acreage, there's approximately 200 acres that should be in Stanley, that should be in Cabarrus County, and about 60 acres that should be in Stanley County. Identified, there's four houses that are obviously across the line based on the 1762 line. So this section of the county line, even though reestablished as a straight line, we would like to make you aware that this line would partly be asked from Cabarrus County to recognize the river as the county line at some point in the future. They understand that they can't provide services on this side of the river as easily as we can, and we can't provide services on that portion that's across the river. So once the line's established, maps are recorded for the straight line, then we may be in the, be looking at changing that to the river at some point in the next year or two.
Anyone have a question, Michael?
Just one more slide.
It's pretty interesting, but go ahead.
About county line adjustments. The general statute is very clear that states boundaries for each county must remain presently as established until changed by law, which the Attorney General has deemed that the General Assembly makes the law, and so they would have had to be the ones to change it. Two or more counties can have lines in question surveyed and marked and mapped. That's also referenced in the North Carolina General Statutes. And changes to county lines shall be approved by the General Assembly by local legislation and agreement by both county Commissioners. So I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Anyone?
Could I just add one more?
Yes, you may.
To give you due to the future, sorry. Survey work is underway, as I mentioned, monuments are being established along the line, including important road crossings for access to the public, such as local surveyors and the public. Once established, maps will be recorded in both counties. Local legislation will be required to modify the section along Rocky River, has been observed since the 30s. Tax Office will clarify their maps and calculations based on the estimate in the 14, 15 budget cycle.
Thank you. Now, does anyone have a question? We don't all understand it, but thank you. I think we understand. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Our next agenda item is from the Board of Health, and our presenter will be our Director, Mr. Dennis Joyner. Dennis, welcome.
Good evening and thank you, Mr. Commissioner McIntyre. We have one Board of Health member appointment that I'm bringing to you tonight. A registered nurse representative on the Board of Health, Ms. Margaret Rudesel, has asked to step down from her position due to other obligations that she has. She was serving a third year, serving, starting to serve her third year of a three-year term. And so we are coming tonight to ask for that position to be filled by another appointment of your choosing.
Thank you. And do we have a presentation? Commissioner Donovan?
Well, we do have an application here, a valid application from Deborah Norris, who I know serves at Stanley Regional Medical Center, and I would move that we appoint her to this place on the Board of Health.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Donovan, second by Commissioner Dennis. Any other nominations? Hearing none, those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. And the ayes have it. Thank you.
I have no problem.
Thank you.
Birthday is 26, 2013. We're seeing a four-day...
I didn't catch that. All right. Our next agenda item is the consent agenda. We have minutes from regular meeting in February 18th. EDC requests for budget amendment, EMS for requests for budget amendment, and Health Department requests for budget amendments. Anyone have a motion to accept as presented? Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Shudo. The motion was made by Commissioner Dennis. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. And the ayes have it. Thank you very much. They are approved. And we now come to that portion of our meeting that we invite the public to come forward if you'd like to address the Board of Commissioners about... If you'd like to address the Board of Commissioners about anything, and this is for information only, and we welcome you to come forward and speak. And I think I have Dale Ward signed up to speak, is that correct? Welcome Dale, come on down. We don't have any prizes, but come on down.
I understand. Dale Ward up in Dayton. And, uh, appreciate the time to come up and talk. I would like to express my thanks, Mr. Peter here, for, uh, keeping in focus costs that's being wasted on this four-one quality permit. Uh, as I said before, the county commissioner did the right thing in challenging Alcoa at the start, but once Alcoa started negotiating, the greed took over. And now we just face big deficits of, ah, money been wasted. I know some people think a thousand dollars ain't much, but a thousand dollars add up five million easy. And I think y'all need to take that in consideration. This board, or the previous board, because a lot of leadership here has done that to divide this county, has broken up friendships, broken up families over the same thing, y'all drugged this thing out for years. And, uh, I think y'all need to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you Dale, anyone else? At this time, uh, ask for comments from our board, uh, Mr. Donovan, do you have anything? Mr. Dennis?
Yes, I want to give a fruit, a little bit, a little bit of information about our airport, starting back in two thousand and ten. That happened to be the year that we, uh, finished our new terminal building and, uh, it became the new standard for construction of this, uh, terminal buildings for small airports like ours and, uh, it's for the entire community. Like, see, you come up and use it, we got two conference rooms and, uh, it's good for any type civic or any other group like to use it. We got everything you need there, it's really nice. And if you haven't seen it, you need to go up and see it. And that's the new terminal, it was a good key to landing the, well, it's called the Team Aerodynamics, formerly known as Team R V, uh, which they're the world's largest formation aerobatic team. They practice up there quite often on the weekends. If you have time, catch them up there, go watch them practice, they do it right over the, uh, airstrip. They actually close the airspace for them to do it. Uh, last year, they hosted a, uh, training session up there and had thirty-five pilots flying out of there over the weekend. They stayed there the whole weekend and, uh, stayed in hotels around, so that meant a lot to us. Uh, and beginning in two thousand and eleven, we completed in two thousand and twelve, a complete overlay of the runway and the taxiway surface for the county airport. Uh, most of the surfaces were at least twenty years old, which has lasted way beyond the expected life. Uh, the project was, uh, in excess of six million, paid for entirely with grants from the Federal Aviation Administration and Department of Defense through the Nor- North Carolina Air National Guard. In early two thousand and twelve, with a grant from Federal Aviation, we were able to, uh, put in a new A W O S, which is the Automated Weather Observation System. The old one was not very dependable. The new one does have lightning, uh, detection on it, which is very critical for approaching aircraft. Anytime you see the temperature for, on the map, on any of the, uh, wa- radio, uh, TV station, that's, that's coming off the airfield up there, it's automatic. In late two thousand and twelve, we landed Presley Aviation, which is using the, uh, the old terminal building, which wasn't expend to us and now become a income for us. And they're teaching flying, take, I mean, take flying lessons and they're also in the process of establishing what's known in F A A Part one forty-four. Uh, this school will be, is approved by the federal government that will allow veterans to take flying lessons from private to airline transport rating paid for by the G I Bill fund. That's, and, uh, currently we're, uh, at taking place at the airport, we're moving a lot of obstructions around the edge. The trees were getting a little bit too high. I think the contract on that was two hundred thousand, that's paid for by the National Guard. And later on this spring, when the weather's, uh, condition permits, we'll do a three hundred foot, uh, paved overrun at the end of runway two-two, which if airline, airplane comes in a little too hot and needs a runoff section, he's got three hundred feet he can run off the end, which you don't have to worry about the, uh, Guards airplanes, but some of those private jets comes in a little hot sometimes. But also another thing you need to be aware of, how important the air guard and, uh, the national, North Carolina National Guard is to us up there, we have the one forty-fifth and the two sixty-third. They average every month a hundred and fifty motel rooms rented in this county every month, that's the average for the year round. That's just something that we never see. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony, that was very good, very good report. Few things, real quick, um, update on the Alcoa, Stanley County relicensing meter. So far, we spent five million seventy-six thousand eighty-seven dollars over the past, since two thousand and six on this issue. Um, moving on, one of the things I think if they, if, you know, part of the relicensing agreement or R S A is that they would donate a thousand acres to Memorial Mountain State Park, um, once this gets settled. And I know the folks out of Memorial Mountain are pretty excited if that could ever come to them. And I talked to Greg Schneider out there and he sent me an ec- an economic impact of Memorial Mountain State Park on Stanley County. And, um, two thousand and four, they had two hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred eighty visitors to Memorial Mountain State Park and that brought in one point nine million dollars to the local economy. Last year, in two thousand and twelve, they had three hundred seventy-two thousand five hundred and forty-eight visitors to Stanley Ki- I mean, to Memorial Mountain State Park. So he said proportionally, he didn't have the figures of the economic impact, but he figured percentage-wise that the dollars are probably up there. And, um, a couple of things, they have ten full-time career employees and twenty-five seasonal employees and they have done a lot of construction work recently. Um, they, they completed a one point two million dollar project on the shoreline with the boat houses and stuff. They spent improvements of sixty-five thousand dollars on the equestrian trails. And, um, currently, there's, they're working on a four hundred forty-seven thousand dollar project for the new toilet facilities at the top of Memorial Mountain. And they're doing another fifty thousand dollars with repairs along, you know, along the equestrian tr- trails, seventeen thousand dollars worth of, um, to the vacation cabins and forty-five thousand dollars of repairs to the swimming pools. And even whether these local vendors or out-of-county vendors, the folks are here and they're eating here while they're, they're doing it. So Memorial Mountain has a positive impact on, on Stanley County. Moving right along, I'm doing a workday once a month in, you know, the various departments. And, um, I went to the Health Department again last week and I worked with Taylor Jolly in the inspections. I learned a little bit about the inspection department, I thought was kind of interesting, I just wanted to share. They don't just check, the inspectors don't just check restaurants, they do the nursing homes, um, both the cafeterias and the buildings. They do hotels, grocery stores, meat markets, tattoo shops, fairs, public swimming pool, jails, and then they also do the, I think, some water inspections for people, if I'm not mistaken, when people have well water problems. Um, one thing I found interesting, they do, they, they base, they base the inspections and how many times they go to different restaurants by whether they carry raw meat or not. People like McDonald's and Subway, they only go twice a year to them because their food's prepackaged. But someone who's handling, of course, fresh, the fresher food, they see four times a year. Another thing I thought was interesting is, probably by the end of this year, you'll see no more restaurant grades above one hundred, because they used to get two extra points for going to the safe serve. Now, that's no longer, they don't get the extra points, they get points deducted if they don't have someone that goes. It's still, it's kind of working opposite there, it's kind of nice, um. And we did go to Ingalls, Ingalls Deli and inspected that. We went to North Stanley High School and inspected their cafeteria and she said the, the, the restaurants at the high scho- I mean, the, the school restaurants or, I mean, cafeterias are always well above standards because they have, they have more inspections they have to go through. And it's kind, it's just, this is kind of interesting following, they even have to take off the little caps on the soda dispensers to make sure there's no buildup there, I mean, they do, it's just amazing watching them. So they do a good job, Dennis, your folks do a good job inspecting the restaurants. And then, lastly, just want to mention, um, Lindsey and I met with the Subcommittee of Animal Control and we've made a lot of compromises in there and I feel pretty comfortable, I would like to just present it on the, um, you know, once we get the changes and put it out there for the public to view it. I think we've got a lot of feedback over the three public hearings and we've got a lot of email, you know, email comments and, um, to perhaps present it on the next time. I think that, um, Commissioner Donovan may have other ideas on it, but we just want to know the direction of whether we want to just, um, put it out there and let the people look at it and, and like I said, Commissioner Donovan may have other ideas.
I think we talked about the other day, um, just the idea that, uh, we, we did talk about some things and I think that, uh, Dennis, uh, took notes and, and intends to put that out or, or make those, uh, those, uh, changes. But I think we need to look at it again. What we talked about before was that if we had any people who are with the, uh, folks who are rescue that, that, uh, uh, group of citizens and also the hunters. And we, we met for, I think, three hours in the night and, and I don't think I ever got to the place where I was able to look at, uh, where the information provided by the lobbyists that came to two of our, um, meetings, Dennis. Um, Henry, I think her name's Henry, um, her first name's Henry, at least, anyway, um. So we, I, I don't know that we ever got completely into that and so that's why I was, I was down in Peter when we met, that we may want to look at that again, we may want to, um, meet a second time that allows those groups who volunteered. I know Ms. Hannah Hearn was here and volunteered and some folks from Rocky River, Coon Club or somebody like that was here. So, the question is, do we want to try to meet a second time with them before we, uh, put it, put it out there and, and bring it back? Or just exactly what we want to do? So, what, uh, Commissioner Shudo and I decided to do is just kind of bring it back to you guys. And we may want, uh, Mr., uh, Commissioner Morton's input before we make a decision, but, uh, I think you, uh, the Health Department's working on trying to make any changes and corrections and then we can take a look at it and see what we'll do from there. Is that, is that accurate?
Okay, we'll take that information and, uh, probably would want to have another meeting and include some of those folks and you still may have it ready to present on the eighteenth, but, uh, I guess that's, yes, the eighteenth. So, um, wha- whatever schedule you're on, just, uh, make us aware of it and we'll deal with it when time comes, thank you. Uh, County Manager, have any comments?
No comments, sir, thank you.
County Attorney?
No comments, sir, thank you.
I will entertain a motion at this time to, uh, recess this meeting and go into closed session to consult with the County Attorney in accordance with G S, one forty-three dash three eighteen, decimal eleven, little eight, three, little, uh, three, to discuss the four-one quality permit intervention in A P G I's record, public records request lawsuit. Entertain a motion. Have a motion by Commissioner Dennis and second by Commissioner Donovan. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no, and the ayes have it, thank you.